Sure. Danielle, can you determine if we have a quorum?
Chairperson Golden, Vice Chair Pulitz.
Present.
Treasurer Rogers.
Here.
Member Jones. Member Hamilton.
Here.
Member Hutter.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Okay, with a quorum present for this meeting, I'd like to ask Stan Jones to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Everyone was issued a copy of last month's minutes to our past meetings. Is there anyone that has any concerns, or can we go ahead and move to approve the minutes? Okay, Board Member Stan moves to approve the minutes.
My second.
All right, John Rogers' seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, no one's opposed, we'll move on. We will have public comment available today, however, there's no one in the gallery right now. But members of the public who wish to address the Airport Authority may speak on agendized and non-agendized matters related to the airport. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the Chairman to calendar the matter for a future Airport Authority meeting. Okay, very good. Okay. Item number one, under Public Hearings, for Discussion and Possible Action, the Review and Approval of Proposed Renewal Agreement of the Cooperative Agreement between the Authority and the City of Carson City. I'll turn this over to Mr. Takis.
Steve Takis, Airport Counsel, although I'm identifying as Charles Lindbergh this evening.
There we go.
The, um, this, uh, this item is actually, uh, finally, we're getting to a renewal of our cooperative agreement with the city. Back in 1989, the legislature created the Airport Authority, and the laws that created the Airport Authority provided for a transition of the property and assets from the city to the Airport Authority. However, before that occurred, we were advised by the Solicitor General that if we did that, we wouldn't be eligible for federal AIP grants, which, of course, those FAA AIP grants are the lifeblood to the airport. So the transition agreement we entered into back in 1990 was the Cooperative Agreement, and it basically said, the city continues to own the land and remains as the grant sponsor. The Airport Authority does all the work, essentially, which is consistent with the law that was adopted. The idea was that the airport would take this off of the city's plate, and back then, the city was very anxious to get rid of the airport. The, um, and so what we have before you is the Cooperative Agreement Renewal Agreement. It's a five-year agreement, that's what the, the city gave to us as a proposal, and I think we're good with that, or at least I recommend that you approve that. It got rid of the things that were obsolete in the old agreement. So the old agreement talked about transferring a maintenance account and some equipment. Well, that equipment and those accounts have long since been transferred, in fact, the equipment has long since been retired. So we took out all the things that were obsolete, and the DA's office did a very good job of drafting an agreement that says, here's the stuff that still remains. And what remains is, the city still remains as the property owner and the grant sponsor. The Airport Authority continues to do all of the work on the airport, the management operations of the airport. And so that's essentially what you have in the agreement in front of you. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Some of the more significant changes were things like insurance, you know, the insurance levels in 1990 were much lower, not very realistic. We have since reanalyzed our insurance and raised our insurance coverage, um, so we've included those requirements in the agreement. And, uh, there have been two changes to the law that created the Airport Authority, and those changes were also incorporated, relatively minor changes. And like I said, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. We have this same agreement scheduled for review and approval by the Board of Supervisors at tomorrow morning's meeting. And all of this is so that we can get this in place before our last extension expires, which is either October or November, I can't remember off the top of my head. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Anybody, questions?
Sure. Steve, now I recognize I'm, I'm one round back, having missed, um, the last meeting, so maybe this, apologies if this was discussed in the subject then. One thing in just flipping through this that I noted was that, um, the references in our prior edit to certain, um, remissions and tax rebates or so forth to the airport don't appear to now be in this agreement. And I know we have a different agenda item around that subject, so maybe just if you could, help me understand what led to that sequence of...
Okay, so the important ones are still in the agreement, the property tax and the, um, let me just get to the page. But, um, the important ones are still in here, the only one that we took out was the fuel tax, because the fuel tax does not go to the city. Since our last meeting, or actually just before our last meeting, and, and no need to apologize for the last meeting, I was also not here, I had a medical emergency, so I missed the last meeting as well. But, um, the, since that earlier meeting, we worked with DMV, who actually collects, uh, the fuel tax. They're kind of the division of the Nevada Department of Transportation that handles the fuel taxes, and they've demonstrated to us that currently, the jet fuel tax is already coming to us and has been coming to us for a long time. It doesn't go to the city, so there's no need to have a provision in here telling the city, turn over to us these fuel taxes. Uh, the one tax that's not in here is the item, the next agenda item, which is the avgas tax, and, um, but we're going to address that separately. But the other provisions as to the property tax revenues, those are still in here, and those are important because we even referenced the, um, the prior agreements that were made with the city.
And apologies for that, I do see it on page five, item, uh, six H, an additional covenants, I think that's what you're referring to, and, uh, continue to transfer the personal property tax, and then it goes on to say the other things. Thank you.
Yeah. Now, the other thing I should mention is, um, you know, the FAA, um, has indicated to us, and Ken Moan actually started down this path, of what about having the Airport Authority be the grant sponsor, which was the original plan? And, uh, Ken pointed out to the FAA when he was making that argument to them, that the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority is much like the Carson City Airport Authority. It doesn't have direct taxing authority, only the city does, kind of like in here, the Airport Authority has some taxing authority, but it's only through the city. Um, and, uh, Mike Williams at the FAA ADO, Airport's District Office, indicated to both Ken Moan and myself, yeah, we can start marching down that path. Now, he didn't say, yeah, you've got a green light to go ahead, but when my discussions with him, he suggested, if you're going to go down that path, A, work with the city on it, and probably the smart way to do it is first be cosponsors, have the city and the airport be cosponsors, so you both have your feet in the water. That way, if you run into a problem or something, uh, you know, you can back out, um, and then see how that goes. And so, um, sometime during this five-year period, we may want to explore that. And on the other hand, you may decide you don't want to, um, but I'm just throwing that out there, that that's another reason why it probably makes sense that the DA's office recommended five years for the agreement, and, and why it makes sense to us.
Any other comments? Okay, John?
Just a, just a follow-up to what, uh, Counsel Takis just said, um, tomorrow, we're having our first telephone conference with Mike Williams at the, um, ADO's office to start talking about what, you know, what, uh, we would need to do in order to become grant sponsor, to just do a gap analysis between where we are and where we would need to be. So that, so that's, that will kick off the process.
Perfect.
Anybody else? If not, is someone willing to propose the motion? Am I allowed to do that as the Vice Chair?
Uh, yeah, you can make a motion.
I move to approve the renewal agreement for the Cooperative Agreement between the Authority and the City of Carson City.
Second.
Okay, we heard a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
And then before we leave tonight, I need to collect, uh, Chairman Pulitz, Acting Chairman Pulitz, your signature, and, uh, John Rogers', the Treasurer's signature, and so I can bring that original with me tomorrow morning to the Board of Supes meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, but since we have so many pages of, of addendums, I've got to scroll for a few minutes to get to the bottom of this. Almost there.
I can go ahead and take this if you'd like.
Right ahead, Mr. Takis.
This next agenda item is the Review and Approval of a Resolution Redirecting or Directing the Avgas Fuel Taxes to the Airport Authority. I mentioned this just briefly in the other item, uh, what happens right now is the, well, the federal law, let me back up for a minute, the federal law says that any fuel taxes collected on the airport have to come back to the airport for airport operational expenses. And the federal law has actually said that for quite a while. About four years ago, um, the FAA started enforcing it, and they went around to each of the states and said, show us this money is going back. Well, lo and behold, they came to Nevada, and we looked at the statutes, and the statute said, oh, avgas, first we take a chunk out and we give it to the Civil Air Patrol, and then if there's money left over, we kick it in these other places. And so we worked with Kurt How cool, the aviation's, uh, guy at NDOT, um, and brought forward some legislation to correct that in Nevada law, and the FAA was very accommodating to us, they said, okay, yeah, it's written in the law, go get it changed and get it fixed, and you should be good to go. So, not in this last session, but the session before legislative session, that bill was passed, and it redirected those revenues to the airports. We're talking about a really small amount of money, the avgas tax, because it's one cent per gallon, and it's not all that many gallons, but it's important that we do it right, because we want to be in compliance with federal law. In talking to Kurt How cool about it, um, I asked, well, why, why isn't it being redirected to us, and he told me, we need to adopt a resolution that we can give to DMV, asking them to redirect those revenues to us. And so the item that you have before you is to approve a resolution asking DMV to send the avgas revenues directly to us, instead of the Civil Air Patrol or wherever they're sending them right now. And, again, this was at the advice of NDOT Aviation, and seemed kind of odd to me, but I understand, you know, different agencies have different processes, and if this is their process, this is a relatively easy one for us to comply with. So with that, I'd recommend that you approve the resolution that I've given you, which, in the now-therefore paragraph, is really the guts of it, that says, uh, Nevada DMV, please direct to the Airport Authority the avgas, uh, fuel tax revenue.
Uh, any comments? Okay, uh, with no comments, it seems like a no-brainer, so, uh, Mr. Jones is going to make a motion? Do I hear a second? Okay, Mr. Hamilton's seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. Move on to our last item. As I scroll, here we are, this item is to review and approval of a banner advertising of a new hangar development on airport property. Uh, we have Corey Jenkins on the line, our airport manager, um, Corey, if you're available, would you start this off on this one? And as we wait for Corey...
This is...
Oh, yeah, Corey, you're on now? Yeah.
I am on.
Okay, one thing I do want to preface is that, uh, in my infamous, infamous wisdom, I went ahead and proved, approved, the banner hanging on a couple fences for this, um, for this developer, unknowingly that we're supposed to have board approval, and that we're also supposed to get the city to approve that, that what they're doing is within city, um, compliances, so, um, I'm up, I'm up here to beg your forgiveness and ask for your support in this, uh, in this particular, uh, request for a few banners being hung on the fence. Corey, go ahead.
Okay, so the Ortiz Bros Aviation LLC has requested to hang three banners on the airport fences, and also, uh, they're looking at doing additional banners on their leasehold property that will be very similar to the ones that are out there now. That is at the intersection of Bravo and Charlie. Uh, this is advertising their hangers, uh, as available. This also is in the interest of the airport, uh, because it's a big development out of the airport, and it's going to benefit the airport. Uh, so the question is, is the board going to approve those banners to stay on those fences, and for them to be able to put banners up on their leasehold?
Go ahead, Mr. Takis.
I just wanted to add, um, I, I was kind of in the same boat, you were, um, Member Pulitz, um, I wasn't thinking that there was even a Title 19 requirement, so hats off to Corey for actually looking at Title 19 and seeing there's a requirement that we approve advertising. And then I would also say that in the past, we've done everything we can to help new developments, you know, they're, they're up against kind of a hard stop, where they're building, doing construction, and trying to get people to purchase or lease their hangers as they're going along. And so in the past, we've done what we could to try and help them by accommodating their advertising. Um, we did get a complaint, uh, from one of the other tenants, one of the other hangar associations, saying, hey, wait a second, if you're going to let them advertise, you should let us advertise. Well, if we're talking about available hangar space, that might make some sense, and maybe they should come to you as well with a proposal. Um, and it may be as simple as having a grease board or something else by the entrance to the airport, saying, the following hangers are available in the Carson Executive Hangar Association or Carson Air Group, because those are just onesie-twosies, whereas here, we have an entire development that's being built. And so, um, I think that you can go forward, forward and approve this, and I think you should, because I think we want to do what we can to help this development succeed. Um, and then also be receptive if somebody else has, uh, you know, another request. Now, the other hand, um, I don't think it's a good idea to allow general advertising, you know, hey, Steve Takis wants to put up a sign saying he's the greatest lawyer in the world, call me at this number, that's not appropriate. I mean, it's not appropriate for a bunch of reasons, not only because he's not the greatest lawyer, but, um, but also because the advertising that we're talking about here is, I think, should be strictly limited to what advances these goals that we've met to develop the airport. Um, so that's my advice to you on that, but I recommend approval.
I'd like to just tack on to Steve's comments, um, yes, I've had a couple comments from existing hangar owners, and asking, well, why can't I put my banner up? And I said, I said specifically, I said, number one, we are here to help promote all of you, if you have a vacant hangar, you have something, we, we're going to help you promote it, we're going to put it on our website with you, we're going to let you put up, uh, notices inside the terminal building, we will put lists up for you, and we'll share information when, if you let us know a hangar is available, we'll put it out on the hangar waiting list that we have. The trouble is, this, this is different, this is, as Mr. Takis said, we're, we are promoting a very big development that has long-term positive consequences for everybody at the airport, so we have to show that we have the willingness and the motivation to help promote that with these developers as much as possible. And, and as you said, if someone wants to come to us with a specific need, I would never want, propose to let, let's say, just like a, a realtor to put up a sign that says, Joe Blow Real Estate, uh, you know, see me for all of your real estate needs, oh, and by the way, I have a hangar here too, I, that's not the kind of stuff that I would consider to be on the fence advertising, but again, the board has a chance to approve or not approve each application as it comes through. So, what we have to do after this too, and I'm not sure, Steve, that the, uh, the, um, the Ortiz project, they're going to have to actually verify, have the city give them a stamp of approval too, and I have to be able to guide them on who to contact, so maybe offline, we can figure out who that is.
I know who that is, and, and the real, the real key there are the size and the content of the sign, and I don't think that's going to be an issue, but the good folks at Community Development can help.
Good, we'll, after, we'll, we'll send the Ortiz group, uh, that information after we take our vote, and hopefully this will be not a non-issue, so, if, is there any other comment, yes, Mr., go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, I, I agree very much with the sort of importance of, you know, how you separate the this from the that, and under what terms that will make sense to people, and I, I think that there is something different, uh, as you've pointed out, about the kind of, um, pre-construction and course of construction phase of a new development versus perhaps what, um, we might accommodate and support after construction versus, as you've pointed out, things we're not going to support that are just sort of general advertising, you know, on our fence. Um, you know, we're at a point when, um, when people are kind of in that very critical financial phase of getting their revenue launched to support their construction, we have a very vested interest in seeing that get completed. And as been pointed out, of course, we have greater tax revenues from, uh, completed project than we do from an incomplete one. I think I'd also note that, you know, in those lease agreements, we put the onus on the developer to complete their construction in a period of time, usually what, two years? And so we're asking something of them, uh, from a timing standpoint, it seems reasonable that we would support them in this way during that phase of their development, um, you know, uh, with, with helping them get, get through that. Um, and so I, I definitely support this, uh, maybe with one condition, and it's, um, not really trying to be funny, but helpful, I would say that if, uh, we have been presented with the exhibit of the actual banner, that perhaps, um, they would like to look at it, it actually saying Eric Ortiz instead of Eric Oritz. So, for, uh, for, for our petitioners, maybe just a little helpful proofreading for you.
Well noted, any other comments, John?
I absolutely agree with everything that's been said about the need to support, uh, the new development, but I also see us writing policy up here. Everybody, you know, hey, that you have to go to the city, get the sign approved, you have, here's, here's circumstances where we will allow signs, here's circumstances where we won't allow signs, and so I'd like to instruct our, um, manager to take this opportunity to write a policy, bring it back to the board for review and approval on advertising, so that we, so, so that we don't get bit, um, whether he said, she said, and, uh, you know, down the line.
Well done, Corey, more items to add to your list?
Just for clarity, I think that that's a great point, do you think that we have the ability, even in what you mean there, Treasurer Roberts, that, um, that we could still approve this ca- case and get it moving to the city, even while we wait for that policy to be drafted?
I do think that, I think we ought to approve this, and we ought to give our, our manager a work assignment, you know, to, um, to codify what we've discussed here in a policy, so that we don't have to reinvent this down the road.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yeah, when I first drove up, I was kind of surprised at how, how, how big it was, I was shocked. At that, of course, I, I support this, um, you know, coming soon, that, you know, co- coming soon, that's a big, that's questionable, how, how soon is soon, but, um, so, uh, you know, I'm not going to say anything about the size of this particular one, but maybe we want in the future, uh, tone it down just a, just a little bit, but otherwise, I'm completely in favor of what we're doing here.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I think, I think our policy should definitely set, should identify how you pick sign sizes, um, it's either going to be us telling, telling, uh, potential sign, you know, people publishing signs what sizes be, or referring them to some city code as Counsel Takis mentioned earlier.
Actually, I would, I would also like to say that if we've got other hangar associations that want publicity about hangers available, I've got people asking me all the time, hangers available, we don't have any hangers available. So, um, if we are not helping those, those people with that, then we ought to get down and somehow help them get hangers, but if, if anyone's after a hangar, um, I'd like to know where it is.
Yeah, good point, Mr. Hamilton, we are, we do get calls, we do have a waitlist, and when hangers do come up, we do notify people there's hangers available. Go ahead, Mr., go ahead, Stan.
Steve, who approves it for the city, is that planning?
Planning, I, I would direct them to Hope Sullivan.
Yeah.
I mean, she, she has actually airport experience as well as planning experience.
Very good, okay, with that said, would someone be willing to make a motion? Go ahead, John.
I move to approve the Ortiz Brothers advertising, um, uh, for placement on a, a fence at the airport.
Will there be a second? Mr. Hamilton's seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion pass. With that, we're moving on, uh, do we have an airport engineer? Do we have an airport engineer report online today?
Yeah, Nadine is here.
Oh, hello, Nadine. Please welcome to the meeting and go ahead.
Thank you. So the major updates, there's a few projects that haven't really moved at all. But the pavement maintenance project regarding the signs specifically, I did talk with Rick yesterday and he mentioned that you guys were receiving a few of the parts for the signs. And I think, Corey, correct me if I'm wrong, nothing else has showed up for those. So we're still waiting on the rest of those signs to show up to complete the installation and to finish the final marking on the runway. And the other item here that has kind of changed since the last update is the POs have been issued for the snowplow and the snowplow equipment. And that's on slate for delivery in spring of 2022, which we knew that was going to be a pretty long lead time, but that's officially in the works now. And then lastly, the air nautical survey for the nighttime approach, that project, Lean Engineering has initiated their survey work with whoever they're working with. I believe it's Wood Rogers.
Wood Rogers.
And has been in contact with us. Yep. And I believe they have been also talking with Corey directly as far as the scheduling goes. And they are, as of yesterday, they're pretty confident that they can get it done within the timeframe that they need to, which is within, or I should say, by the end of October. So that is also moving. And I don't think there's anything else really in the works right now as far as construction or design projects, other than those. Do you guys have any questions about that or about any of the other ones on the list here?
Nadine, Tim here. Is it appropriate to ask you to give Wood Rogers a call and make sure that you're keeping them on task? This is really important to us to get done before the leaves fall because they could automatically say, well, we're no longer able to do this because of so. Any enticement or, not enticement, but motivation would be greatly appreciated by all of us on the board.
Sorry, the connection's a little spotty, but I believe what you're asking is to give them a little bit of a gentle push or nudge to make sure that they get this done within the, okay. Yes, absolutely. And Chris has been on top of that as well, talking with specifically Lean Engineering and our contacts with Lean Engineering, but then really pushing them to give us as much information as they can on a more frequent and regular basis. So the latest update that we did receive was pretty thorough and sounds like the ball is actually rolling now. But we're definitely going to stay on top of it and make sure that it does get done by the deadline that they're saying it's going to be. Because, you know, especially if we don't have any obstacles like smoke and all of that stuff, I think we're getting to that point where we'll be pretty clear to move forward and there shouldn't be any hangups.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
You're welcome.
Okay, well, if there's no other comments, thank you, Nadine. We're going to turn the rest of it over to Corey.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so our fuel flow numbers are way down. So last month, they were about 51% lower than the previous year. This is probably caused by the smoke and limited visibility from the smoke from the wildfires. Our operations numbers also reflect that. We're way down in operations numbers as well. So over the past month, I've been really busy with audit preparation, which is going on right now. And I'm continuing to work with our CPA and John to ensure that they have everything they need for that audit. Some progress has been made on the weed sprayer. That is just about assembled and they are finalizing the assemble and work assembly and they're working on testing it before they deliver it to us. But we should get delivered pretty soon here. There, Rick has been doing a lot of work in preparing for the applicator license. He did learn that there is some practical training requirements. He may already meet those requirements from his experience up at Reno. And if they require any additional training, he's going to work with his supervisor from Reno to make sure that he gets all the hands-on training required. He has all the training materials and he's going to be preparing to take that certification test. Progress on the survey of the parcels for land lease. We discussed the proposal for the triangle parcel and the area east of Bravo. I have both of those proposals attached here in the board packet. And I have signed off on both of those to move forward. They do, they all fall below the $5,000 requirement for board to vote on it. So we're moving forward with that. CFA has sadly been hit very heavily by the COVID pandemic and they are behind schedule. I was hoping to have something on the calendar by today, but they are behind schedule. They haven't been able to get something on the calendar yet. But they have assured me that they have started on the backend work for those surveys and they are actively working on it. So as soon as they can get somebody out here to get those surveys complete, they will. I also did a lot of work with Nevada Department of Taxation this month. We are all caught up on our Department of Taxation reports, including the quarterly reports, the indebtedness report and the five-year CIP update. So like I was saying earlier, our airport operations, our aircraft operations were only 323 last month, which is way down. I actually thought it may have been an error. So I did some research to make sure that the ADS-B equipment was functioning properly and it is functioning properly. It's just really slow out there right now. You can see the detailed charts of those numbers down below. And available for any questions.
Yeah, Corey, Carl here. First off, thank you very much for everything you're doing in picking up after the high bar set by Vice Chairman Police. And I know that you were both roundly complimented for your service in the last meeting. So since I missed that, I will just duplicate that and look forward to seeing you around a bit more. But also thank you for keeping things moving with regard to the survey, as you've just talked about. I was just wondering if you might, in concert with that, remind us where we sit with the appraisal status for the leased parcels east of the North-South taxiway? Because I think we're still under a valid appraisal for the center triangle. And if you could remind us of what the date that that goes stale on, that would be also wonderful.
I do not have that information available right now, but I will definitely get that to you.
Great. Just trying to, you know, I'll take the opportunity here to just tie off that I, you know, continue to keep close contact with the Carson Tahoe executive folks and they are aware of your good work. I know that they are in the process of reviewing the lease and I've encouraged them to please come back with comments to me and to this group with any other questions, concerns, you know, likes, dislikes, you know, as soon as possible, given that we're moving all of this together. And of course, we'd like to try to keep that project moving efficiently for them. So yeah, if you could, Corey, just let me know what the parallel timeline looks like for appraisal of the leased parcels east of the taxiway. That'd be great.
I will get that for you.
Any other questions of our airport manager? Okay. Then let's get on to the rest of our agenda. See here. Are there any comments that would like to be made by Mr. Takeus?
Just a couple of quick things. As Corey mentioned, we're doing our annual audit. I've already provided the auditors with the annual legal opinion to go with that. We're in good shape there. Back on the issue of the signage, just a suggestion. We all get contacted by people looking for hangars and it would be nice if we, if our webpage, and we've offered this to people before, to list hangars on our webpage because that can be broadly seen by anybody, whether they're moving across the country or just across town. But the same offer could be made to these other hangar associations. If you have a hangar available, tell us, we'll put it on the webpage and you'll probably get more calls than you want, you know? I mean, that's a great way to do it. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention one other thing on the fuel taxes. That fuel tax resolution is on the regular base ab gas tax. There is a provision in the law that would allow us to add a supplemental fuel tax. I'm not recommending that you do that, in part because a couple of other airports in the state have done that and they've seen their fuel sales drop off more than the tax would have generated. And so you want to be cautious there. But I just wanted to clarify that what we're talking about here is the base tax that's going to be on there no matter what. And the optional tax would be something different that you could or could not, you could or may not want to consider at some other time. I don't have anything additional.
Okay, very good. Treasurer's report, Mr. Rogers?
First, I'd like to ask Counsel Takeus, what is the allowable additional fuel tax? Just out of curiosity.
I think we can go up to nine cents a gallon additional. It's pretty significant. But and a couple of the airports have actually done that. And I think they're rethinking it now because they've realized that the fuel prices are pretty competitive and that's enough to push you out of that competition. And, you know, if you hang out at all by our fuel pumps at the airport, which I do a lot and I know Paul does because we're out there flying and my hangar is right across from it. There's a lot of aircraft that fly in here that don't, that are flying in here to get fuel because our fuel prices are competitive. If you add a surcharge to it, you may drive that away and you'd really want to do the analysis to find out which way we're better off before you jump into that. I did mention it to the fuel provider here on the airport and his reaction was pretty negative, as you might guess, because he's worried that it would drive away the customers. But I think you'd want to do the analysis, you know, and figure it out for yourself.
Great. Okay, as mentioned several, a couple of other times, we are deep into providing data to the auditors so that we can complete the audit. We have to be done with the audit by early November in order to comply with our requirements. And then I would want to point, I do want to point out on our P and L, we have an anomaly on there. We don't show any revenue from personal property tax. And the reason for that is a good reason. We just got our property tax check from the city and it was quite a bit larger than what we were anticipating. And so we are going through the process of making sure we allocate those funds correctly between this fiscal year and last fiscal year. So we don't quite know what budget numbers, I mean, what numbers to use to apportion our property tax for this fiscal year, you know, onto our P and L. So that'll get fixed before next meeting. And that's all I have.
Can I just add one thing on the personal property tax? You know, that's primarily the tax on the aircraft. And the Carson City jumped in, as some other municipalities have done, and they're now sending out a questionnaire saying, have you done any improvements to your airplane? And if you respond to it honestly, like I did, your tax bill jumps way up because, you know, I put $30,000 worth of avionics into my airplane and I was paying, I don't know, some ridiculously small amount before that because it's an older airplane, it was like $50 a year or something. And now it's about $350 a year. But I mean, I'm okay paying it, but I think that may be one of the things that is increasing those. It isn't just aircraft are more expensive and perhaps more valuable, but it's the city's actually doing the homework to make sure that improvements to aircraft are included in those personal property taxes, which is a good thing.
Okay, Treasurer Rogers, I just had one quick question on this. Note, line 2000, accounts receivable. I noticed that it's a negative number and I was just curious, it's negative 39,596. I was just curious how we end up with a negative number in accounts receivable.
I have asked that question several times of our accountant and they tell me, and it makes sense. And I'm trying desperately at this meeting to remember, but it has something to do with a prepaid situation where we've gotten, we've gotten a payment in advance of it being recorded onto our.
So it's sort of like an accrual on prepaid leases or prepaid?
Yep.
I just, I can add, in the past, I've seen that happen before because somebody will prepay their lease for a full year and it straddles across our fiscal year. And so it creates those kinds of anomalies. We do have another area where we have certain prepaid leases. You know, there were leases like the Gonai Aviation Lease. Cubix had prepaid like 15 years' worth of that lease. And so that money hangs out there. We can't touch that money by law, but it's sitting out there, a separate account. And sometimes that gets reflected as a negative. It shouldn't be, but sometimes it does on our financials.
Yeah, that's certainly a part of what we get to deal with when we do auditing every year is to work around the details of how to properly account for prepaid leases.
Well, it makes sense because I would imagine that you'd never see that negative number. That negative number would be masked if we were in a period where we have a bunch of bills out that haven't been paid. Now it's swamped by the positive number. Then when you get to a point in the fiscal year where most of those things have been paid, it kind of surfaces at low tide. So I think I get that. Thank you.
I was actually hoping that we could move that prepaid leases and make that be a balance sheet item instead of show up on our P and L in the way that it does. But we haven't pulled the trigger on that yet and I'm not pushing it particularly hard.
Okay, if there's no other information from the treasurer report, this is a chance for the members to make any contributions. Stan, you have anything you'd like to speak about? Paul?
Yeah, I'll just comment on two things. As far as fuel prices and taxes, as ridiculous as it might seem, someone will spend $50 to save $20 on fuel because they want to go to the cheapest fuel place. So that's one thing. So raising taxes on fuel, I don't think is going to be smart overall in the long run. The other thing is that our traffic is way, way down because of this, I mean, this smoke has been devastating. I mean, Tahoe is closed down as well as everyone canceling the reservations to the whole area. And of course, now it's beautiful. Everyone's canceled all the reservations. So we're going to probably be down another month on this. So the fires have almost had much more detrimental effect than this COVID thing overall economically on the airport.
Thanks, Paul. John? Nothing else? Carl?
Maybe just a quick question. What does, and I don't know if Corey's still on, but what is the status with the fire department's approval of the stellar fueling situation on the south ramp?
This is Corey here. I don't have any additional information on that.
Okay, thanks.
I had the same question last week too, Carl. And I guess it's just an ongoing, one of those, you know, slow processes trying to get all the different agencies working together on that, so.
But that's not something pending authority action at this time.
Not at this time, no, no. Okay, thanks. And then because there's no one in the audience tonight, public comment is limited to either email or in person. As you all recall, a couple of months ago, we decided to limit public comment to in-person or by, in writing ahead of time. If there's an appetite to change that. If there's an appetite to change that down the road, you should all let us know and we can determine if that's something we want to do. As far as that goes, I don't have any, is there anybody that wants to put something on the agenda for next month that we haven't discussed at this point? Yeah, Stan? Or be in person. For years, it was always come up and show up and make your public comment or send it in writing and we would discuss it at the meeting. And during the COVID situation, we changed it and allowed people to call in. But a couple of months ago, it was determined by the chairman and Mr. Takeus to go ahead and put it back to the normal show up and make your public comments or send an email or a letter to the chairman ahead of time. Yeah, I don't really have any dog in that hunt either. I'm fine either way, but that's where we are right now. So if we want to change it, Steve, will we have to, how would we have to do that?
No, you can just change it on the next agenda. You know, the concern was, we had some people call in that we think were using fake names and just they were put up to say things. And the problem with phone calls coming in is there's no way to ascertain whether those people are really real and their comments should be taken seriously. And so at least if we get something in writing or they show up in person, you kind of eliminate that, that kind of ghost, you know, people who try to hide behind the internet and just throw stones.
So if we want to change that, we can discuss it and we can change that. Okay, so unless there's any other comments or suggestions, this meeting has been adjourned.